The board of county commissioners now in session. We'll begin with prayer. About the prayers, Commissioner Jones, for you ladies in prayer.
Yes, sir. Father, we thank you today for this day you've given us. We thank you for this time you've given us together. Father, we thank you for the opportunity, Lord, for you to prove yourself in applying wisdom and knowledge to our hearts and minds today on the decisions we make, knowing that the today of Franklin County will be tomorrow. We thank you for this time and opportunity and praise and...
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next will be approval of manage.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
My motion filed by Commissioner Sanders, filed by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries. Next on the agenda will be payment of county bills. So moving.
Sure.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lottley, second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries. Next will be Mr. Howard Naylor, Superintendent of Public Works.
I'm all doing, Commissioner. Just got a couple of items on the grass cutting and stuff. We continue on and fixing the roads. Basically at Alligator Point once a week. We're still keeping it up. So, and our inmates, we've been, for the last month, we've kind of showed on inmates in some places is growed up pretty bad. So, you know, regular state crew, I think we've had one maybe in two weeks that come out. So, and another thing on that storm and stuff, we need to keep a close eye on it.
Well, the inmates, they had some issues over at the prison, so they kept a lot of inmates in for a couple of weeks, had protests over there or something.
About a week, yeah, they kept a man. But our state crew, see, they can get six, seven, maybe eight inmates. So, which has helped us a lot when they come out. But I just think you've been short of people and keeping them inside.
The warden told me that he couldn't let them out at the time. Short-handed?
Yes.
He's been working them at the main unit. He said maybe next week they would start getting them back out.
Any commissioners have anything for Mr. Howard?
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman. I had Clay Candy go out to look at West Drive. I'd had some complaints about the draining off on West Drive off of 67 in Carabel. Have you heard from the engineer?
He said he was going to get up with Allen, I think, and then he was going to get back with me.
Okay.
But they, last week, they were there looking at it, too.
Okay.
But part of the season, they were looking to...
When he gets back, yeah, when he gets back, please let me know.
I sure will.
Okay.
And as you're talking, Ms. Sanders, over there off of 67 on the east side, there's a guy that's got the main ditch blocked up. And we got to figure out and get a hold of him where he can take the blocks out or bricks out in front of that cover pipe.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and, I know that's the problem that we've been talking about. It's where the guy needs to have two pipes in there instead of one pipe. Am I right?
I think he's three pipes that's in there. But they got that rock like a dam built up in front of that cupboard, which your water got to build so high, then it feeds over.
Yeah.
For some reason, I don't know why.
Well, I'm going to make a motion that you go ahead, give you the leeway to go ahead and take care of the situation.
Okay.
Contact whoever you've got to contact and get that draining, because that right in there is the main drain that drains all that land.
Oh, that too. They wouldn't, 67, oh...
Yeah, the prison and all that. It helps drain the prison out and all. So, we need to take care of that, and I'll put that in form of motion.
Second, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Mason. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries. Anything else from the commissioners for Mr. Naylor?
Yeah. Hi, y'all. Get close with Pam, y'all. Watch the situation.
Yes, sir. We'll watch it.
Do what you're doing if you have to.
Okay. And another thing that I want to bring up, too, which I saw about on our 57 chair, that we usually pick a lot of driveways. We, we can't get that right now. So, they do got some, but they sending it somewhere else.
Any other comments from Mr. Naylor from the board?
I have one, Mr. President.
True.
Mr. Howard, I know that it's not even on top of the list, and I don't think it should be. But at some point, I would like for us to take a look at these, there's multiple sections of the bike path on Seton Avenue where grass is thrown, going all the way across the thing through it, or it's running over it. It just needs maintaining and killing. If not, it was just destroyed was there.
Yeah, it uses through the winter, or whenever things slows down, that's when we, you know, try to get that grass and stuff off some sidewalk or bike path.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Mr. Naylor, from the board? Thank you, Howard. Thanks for being here. Mr. Fonda Davis, solid waste.
Good morning, commissioners. I'd like to apologize for not having a report turned in this morning, but I do have a couple items I need to bring for you. The first one is the grant, solid waste grant. We've been approved for $90,000, 907, I believe it is. Just need the chairman to sign off on that. Need a motion. So, we'll have to write in the chairman.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lottley, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries.
Is that what we got, ladies, your question?
Yes, sir. We also, as opposed to reimbursement, just to add just a little reimbursement. Also, we received a letter from Waste Management in reference to the transfer station addressed to the chairman. They agreed current contract, dear chairman, pairs the current contract between Franklin County Waste Management Incorporated of Florida is set to expire on March 1st, 2018. Under the term of agreement, it states either party may terminate this agreement with or without cause upon 180 days written notice of termination. Waste Management Incorporated of Florida would like to tender this letter as our 180th notice of termination, according to current contract language. We appreciate the relationship we have with Franklin County, its owner, official, and staff. We continue to work with your staff on the transfer station agreement and hope to have a final draft agreement for the county commission consideration soon. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact Ronnie Bell at 850-324-8137 or by email. Just wanted to make the board aware of that 180 days is approaching and that they will no longer be running the transfer station. Some of myself and Mr. Schuler, we've been going over the contract, hoping we'll have something found by this week to bring to the board.
And we're meeting with them when this week?
Ah, it's Wednesday.
Mr. Chairman. I know I was absent at your budget workshops, but remember, if, when we started planning this, we planned to start the transfer station, and we budgeted to start the transfer station next year, not within 180 days. So, that's something you guys need to be aware of this afternoon as we go into our public hearings for the budget.
Yeah, you made it something that it would start in March, it would happen within the fiscal year, not the beginning of the year.
Chairman, if you remember, you're the one that said, well, we got a budget for at least half, but it's going to be more than half now.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, last question.
Yeah.
If it's 180 days, we actually put it for February, not March, correct?
That's correct.
I mean...
Any, does board members have any comments from Mr. Davis?
I have a couple of other things I'd like to run by you. The, for the transfer station, we, like Mr. Malone said, we talked about a position when we take over. Since it's coming 180 days, I'd like to know if I could go ahead and advertise for that, that position.
You got money in your budget pool?
Ah, it's, it's going to be added in, yes, sir.
Go on. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lottley. Do we have a second?
You got anybody that's on the yard that you're going to move over, or how you're going to do that?
Well, Commissioner, we have, we had a team meeting and then I opened it up to the employee, and nobody wants it. But if I'm directed by the board to move somebody, I'll do it. But even if I move somebody, it's going to shorten me schedule.
Oh, yeah, I just wondered if you had somebody there that, that knows how to run it, that you hadn't got to train.
Right. Yeah, and I imagine Kevin could get us started. Kevin's salary is, I can put him up there and get a little training on it. Also, you got to go to school, eight hours to be certified, DEP requires.
Fonda, let me get this straight now.
Yes, ma'am.
The 180 days starts from when? Now?
Yes.
Okay. So, you're talking about February, right?
That's correct.
Okay. When you advertise for somebody, it's going to take you about a month?
Yes, ma'am.
Three, four weeks to get somebody in, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, they will basically be employees after this year, probably starting October 1 or something, or they're, they're about, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it's, because we didn't schedule for somebody to be hired this year.
Right.
You see what I'm saying?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
It's for somebody next year, so I just want to make that right.
Right.
And hold the record on that, so. I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lottley, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
That's it.
Any comment from Mr. Davis from the board?
Now, when we hire, how long it take for them to be permanent? It take about three or four months before they be permanent, right?
Yes, they, yes, yes. Six months probation.
In the meantime, they'll be training under the people that's running it now?
That's correct.
Any other comments from Mr. Davis?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis, would you explain to the board the change in the proposed contract that Waste Management has submitted to us concerning the compact or the compactor?
Initially, they want, I think, you're talking about the part where they wanted to just give us the equipment, the truck, the compactor, and they was going to let us use the boxes. The change is that they want to lease the compactor, and we are to, the county, we are to maintain it in working conditions, clear, free of all debris. And in the term, they come back to get that compact, or we don't no longer want it, it's to be in, in working conditions.
Good working condition.
Yes.
And it's not in good working condition now, based on my conversations with you.
That's correct.
So, that, for the board to notice, there could be a hiccup in negotiations. I've got some proposals to try and counterbalance those maintenance requirements, but that is a new unknown that's been injected into this negotiation with Waste Management.
Yeah.
Because if we haven't donated us, then we select the level of maintenance. If we lease it, they may impose on us a condition of maintaining that property in good working order. Well, that can become very expensive to the county, because that's an expensive piece of equipment.
Right, that's what I was telling you, you all initially during budget hearing, is that the compactor, I know the one on site right now is wore out, and they talking about they have another one that they want to bring to it. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's worn out, so.
Mr. Chairman, last question.
Yes.
So, ask you a couple of questions. So, the compactor we're discussing, you inside, I'm seeing, you've yet to see it, correct?
The, the other.
Go ahead and switch it to.
That's correct, yes.
And have they expressed to you any clues to how old it is, or is it a five-year compactor, 15-year compactor?
No, no, no year on it. They did, so they had to have it rebuilt.
Do we not budget the money for a compactor?
Yeah, it was, we did.
We did, but that's not to be utilized until they come and...
That's, that's correct.
So, they need to come and get their stuff at the end of this contract. They need to come and get all this stuff and get it out of here.
Okay.
We're going to buy a new one, right?
Yes.
Okay. Well, if 180 days is up, let's, you know, find out how long it's going to take us to get a compactor, and we don't need to buy it today.
Okay.
But they can come and get theirs out, and we'll put another one in. I mean, we already budgeted for that. I don't want no responsibility of keeping up something that's half worn out unless attorney can get it into a, maintain to its, to its current condition, not to improve the compactor. And I don't want no second compactor that ain't no good.
Right.
And I don't want no truck that's worn out that they got to put insurance on that ain't no good. So, they can keep all that worn-out stuff for our concern, and we'll start, well, we supposed to start it, we done budgeted the money for it.
Right.
I don't want to be obligated to keep, I'll keep your stuff up in its current condition. You understand what I'm saying? Where I ain't going to improve the condition of it and rebuild another compactor that's worn out, if they bring it over here and set it on our property and they expect that to be rebuilt, too? Nah.
Yeah. Chairman, my understanding is this compactor is somewhere around 20 years old, 15 to 20 years old, it's been rebuilt at least one, one time, perhaps more. So, my plan, in discussing this with Waste Management, is let's establish what the depreciated value of this compactor is today, and if it's worth $3,000 today, then our repair obligation would not exceed $3,000 on aggregate. I think Mr. Davis was going to check with some other companies that are familiar with buying and selling used compactors to come up with an idea of what that valuation is. But I frankly was not aware that we had budgeted for the purchase of the new compactor. That's good information to have, so.
Go ahead, Mr. Fonda. Well, let me ask you a question, Fonda. Don't, when you lease stuff, don't the people who you lease the fund for, you keep up?
That could be part of the agreement, yes, sir.
You know, that's what I was thinking. I mean, why we got, why they want us to do all this? Is they, they, they for to keep it up, we paying them?
It's worn out.
It's worn out, they just fix it, and then 90 days later, they come and get it because it's theirs. That's what I'm saying. I mean, that don't even make no sense.
Commissioner Lottley, that has to do with how the lease would be set up, if it's set up in February inside of them?
In this case, they're proposing a dollar a year. I can talk with the board individually, but you know why I think they've made this change. But it is a fundamental change in the contractual negotiation that we've been participating in with months with them, and they never came to us and gave us a heads up that, hey, we're changing the contract. They just sent us a proposal with this fundamental change, with a little discussion, which is the purpose of meeting with them on Wednesday to find out what's going on. It was enough of an issue I want to bring to the board's attention, so y'all would be aware of it.
I mean, I've reached out to different companies around, trying to see if anybody would want to come in and run this transfer station. It'd be less headache on us, but I don't know how the board feels about that, if somebody else could come in, Waste Pro or any other garbage service in the area.
They had no response. Nobody responded to you?
I did have one guy supposed to be getting back with me. I don't remember the name of the company right off, but he said he would, I told him we was on a time string, so he's supposed to be getting back with me.
There was one, one individual came to me, and I directed him to find Mr. Davis. They wanted to come in and maybe start bringing competition with Waste Pro, and start looking and picking up garbage within the county. And his company also want to take over his transfer station.
Oh, really?
So, I directed him to Mr. Davis.
Good.
So, he's currently in negotiations with an individual talking to him, which is what he's referring to, which could be a win-win when you have competition. When you got one person providing all the garbage pickup across the whole county, then they set the prices, and then they got a monopoly on it. When you bring in somebody else that's going to compete, you could possibly see a reduction in the price that it costs to pick up garbage. Plus, they want to take over the transfer station, and they have their own compactor. So, that's something that we're going to look at, or I told them the board would entertain it. You know, I can't make the decision, the board has to make the decision, but sounds like a pretty good deal if we didn't have to buy a new compactor that we're discussing here this morning, and another company want to come in and provide some competition and bring their own compactor and run the transfer station. So, we'll see how it goes. There's no, no promise of that, but just to let the board be aware of that situation.
Anything else from Mr. Davis? Thank you, Mr. Davis.
All right, thank you, all.
Next will be Ms. Pam Bernadette, emergency management director.
Good morning, commissioners. Just to let you all know that our office is activated at level three, monitoring the We are gearing up to do reentries over in Carabel. They're supposed to be checking in with the tax collector's office and see if we put somebody in over there. And we got SERC coming into our office to do reentry tax for the rest of the week. We're also looking at sandbags, start telling these people where to get their sandbags if they feel they need them. Don't wait till this weekend, when we possibly could be looking at this. Meeting with Howard and Fonda after this meeting at my office to discuss staging and helping us get sandbags out to places that need, like St. George Island, Alligator Point. And then a meeting with, at 1:30, a meeting with the property management agencies in my office to discuss what they're going to be doing as far as we start working into this weekend. We can expect to start seeing possibly some wind from this as soon as Friday. The other thing I wanted to bring up is in the past, we have normally, when y'all did a local state of emergency, your commissioner, whoever your chairman was at that point, actually ran the disaster after that. And actually, when timeframe came to be, extend the local state of emergency, they just extended it. Is that going to be the case now, or has something changed?
The state of fraud is always an issue, a state of emergency, correct?
Yes, sir.
Which is why you got these people coming into your office and trying to get prepared.
Yes, sir. I mean, if this stays a cat five like it is today, and if she doesn't make that turn, once she gets into that gulf, it's all going to end on that cold front when it drops down, when it's going to turn.
It's not that strong.
This is not, this is not a storm to shelter in place, and that's where we're going to start pushing out. Get your plans together, be prepared, make sure you monitor the weather, because again, this is a cat five. It's not going to be a shelter in place for you there at islands. So, in the past, I know a lot of people have sheltered in place, but if this one stays uncoordinated, it's still iffy because it's way out there. But she's a cat five mouse, and she's not slowing down.
Pam, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Pam, are you working close with Rhonda up there in Liberty, you know, because they do...
Actually, we are. Well, I believe there's partly a conference call with region two people today. We'll be talking to Leon County, we'll be talking to all of those. And then we have a state conference call at 5:15 this afternoon. But my question is the local state of emergency, how, what's ruling on this, this go-round?
Oh, you asking us to...
Yes, sir. If y'all remember correctly, getting the BP or spell, that is when y'all decided that, once y'all instated a local state of emergency, that the chairman was the person that ran the disaster. And basically, when it came time, then he had the authority to extend that without calling y'all all back in here.
I think that's what we need to do, because I mean, that's what we've always done.
I just need to know how this is going to work this go-round.
All right, let's start from the beginning. Does the board need to declare a state of emergency and follow up with what the state, the state has done?
I believe we need to go ahead and do a local state of emergency that covers us through the weekend. You would need to, if you're not going to go by what you've done in the past, then y'all need to meet back here next Tuesday. But that gets us through the weekend.
Okay, well, we can include it all...
It's just a precautionary thing.
Right, we can include it all in one motion, is why I'm asking that. We have declared a state of emergency yet. Correct. So, what I'm asking, just...
Yes, sir. I'm asking you to go ahead and declare your local state of emergency as a precautionary that gets us through this weekend, through the weekend. Like I said, we're, we could start seeing some of this wind as soon as Friday, sooner than that she speaks up.
And your opinion, Attorney?
Well, Commissioner, state statute requires that the state of emergency be renewed once every seven days, and I don't dispute that we have done renewals of states of emergencies in different matters over different periods of time. To a certain extent, I think it's at the discretion of the board, if y'all wanted to delegate to the chairman, that he can act on y'all's behalf in renewing the states of emergency, and the chairman's comfortable accepting that, then that, that's one thing. But y'all could also choose to meet again as a board once every seven days and renew it. I think really it is up, up to the board is how you want to handle this.
Correct.
But it does require it to be renewed once every seven days. And it is actually a good opportunity for y'all to come together as, you know, an elected body and get direct reports firsthand as a group and have the benefit of the group's wisdom of the county commission. But again, I think this falls under the heading of board discretion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I know in the past, we have done that, we have gave the chairman the authority to do that, but if this storm comes, there is going to be a lot of people displaced. In fact, I'm going to be one of them. And I, y'all know, I will not be able to come to a meeting. I would rather have the chairman in here to be able to say, okay, we need to extend this seven more days or whatever, and go by directions of the emergency management.
Anyway, Director of Administrative Services, I'm sure, will be in touch with all the commissioners and...
And then if there's something that we have to be here, then we've got it.
That's correct.
But I'm usually in that area where we don't have quick access, so.
Don't mean to tell me about the field.
I ain't going nowhere. My family lives in...
If it be late next week, what they thinking when it might get here if it turns this way?
They, I mean, they don't know. Like I said, we're looking at, by looking at some of the wind predictions, we could start seeing some winds by, by Friday, and it still not even made landfall. I mean, it's a huge storm. She's big.
I'm not saying big as Texas.
She's big. It's a storm.
Pleasure to board on this issue.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, we move and declare a state of emergency of the approaching storm Hurricane Alma, and also have you designated to extend the state of emergency after seven days, if need be.
Second, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lottley. And that will be after consultation with the Director of Administrative Services, with all the board members, whether or not we need to extend that. If the board tells the Director of Administrative Services that we need to extend it, then I'll be glad to do that. We do have a motion, a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries?
Thank you.
Anything else from Ms. Pam, from the board members?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? Ms. Pam, just because I don't know, I apologize for not knowing, what's the alert system that's on your report?
That is, it is the statewide notification system. You're already signed up for it. All y'all's phone numbers, we automatically went in and signed y'all up for it. That's the other thing that we've been pushing, pushing. We had had Nixel in the past, but the state actually abolished a system, it's statewide. So, we've been pushing that out, that, you know, get on this alert system, especially if you do not have a home phone, because this system will do your 911 calls, your white pages. If you've got a landline, it will call you at home, but if you do not, like myself, do not have a landline at your house, you depend on cell phones, you need to make sure that you go in and get signed up for that.
If somebody can sign up for this at the U C...
They can actually go on our website and sign up for it. It instructs you how, so. But if they've got any questions, just call us. Normally, when they come in to get the reentry tag, we try to go, and get them signed up then.
Pam, real quick, before you go, could you give everybody the link to the worst thing we ever rode in the road?
You're saying, oh, because you had to ask me that? If they'll go on our website, it's there, because as far as off the top of my head, no other one.
And where that site is?
W W W Franklin Emergency Management dot com.
And there's also...
The link on the county website also, okay.
And that thing gives real time, so you can see the wind speeds that are coming across.
I'm sure you'll be reiterating that with the management people over on my island, so they can keep track of it.
Actually, like I said, they're coming in at 1:30, and we're going to sit down and discuss, you know, what their plans are and what they're looking at as far as this storm. Like I said, she stays like she is. This is not one to shelter in place on that island, as people have done in the past. So, they need to go ahead, and we'll start pushing that out. Go ahead, get your plans together, decide where you're going, and again, it's a precautionary measure. Nobody's saying that, you know, we don't take a direct hit, but right now, she's too far out there to know exactly when she's going to make that turn.
Any other comments from Ms. Pam, from the board?
One question. Like, I would like re-enter what Commissioner Jones was asking, like the people who signed up earlier a couple of years ago.
It's still, it's still good. Reentry tax, we have dealt away with expiration date. That was a good thought, but we do not have the data capacity to actually be able to say, well, this one's expired, you need to come in. So, there's no expiration on your, all reentry tax. They're good forever.
What about that phone number? Will that, will that be on the old ones, or you have to come in and do that?
Now, if you've got... Now, if you've gotten a new phone with a new number since we signed you up, yes, you'll need to go back into the website and put that new number in.
Any other comments, Ms. Pam?
I hope we don't come this week.
Me too. Y'all need to be playing, I mean, you don't want to play it on somebody else. That would.
It's going to be a bad one.
It's going to be bad wherever she goes.
Any other comments from Ms. Pam?